Do you do you do you do?
Good. Okay, Mr. Chairman, we are good when you are ready.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Meeting for April 22, 2020. And this is our first virtual meeting due to this pandemic that's going on. And hopefully, maybe our last, hopefully, we'll be back to normal business soon. I will start the meeting with a call of order. I know there's only so many of us on here, but I still think we should do a moment of silence for what's going on in the world today and all those that have lost their lives and are sick, and also for all those, the unsung heroes out there that we've forgotten about, from the nurses, doctors, to the people that are bringing out your food at the curbside, to the people working in the grocery stores. So if we could just take a moment of silence, that'd be great. I don't know how we're going to do this, but I guess we could all say a pledge allegiance. We don't necessarily have flags in our homes, but why don't we just do a pledge allegiance to the, to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice.
And justice.
Thanks, everybody. Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to our agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have no special actions. We have asked the public to email in any public comments they may have, and naturally, I guess, either on the agenda or off the agenda, if it's on the agenda, we'll wait for that item. But do we have any public comments that are off the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I'll go ahead and read it, and then this public comment will be included in the In With The Minutes, once they are posted online. This public comment is from Mr. Ron Kaiser, 18420 Bridge Road, Newtown, PA. Hello, first of all, I hope everyone is doing okay during these trying times. I understand you're taking questions ahead of Wednesday's meeting, which starts at 1:00 PM, which I will be watching on TV. We have heard nothing further about the potential approval of the Toll Project on 20 Bridge Road. I have two simple nagging questions, which I hope you'll answer. One, why in the world isn't the entrance to this plan development on Durham Road aligned with North Drive? And two, apparently, if the current plan is not approved, Toll would build one home for every three acres. What is wrong with that? You still have open space, but it will be in a buyer's backyard, not some unmaintained field of weeds. We were required to buy three acres before we could build. The fact that Toll has a team of lawyers shouldn't automatically give them their preferred plan.
That's it?
That's it.
I'm going to defer to our legal counsel in this, in this matter. If Mr. Sander can give some direction on the what-ifs and so on that are addressed in Mr. Kaiser's email.
I think the most succinct answer is that the matter will not be considered until at least the board's first in-person meeting. We have received an extension from Toll Brothers to make a decision on the conditional use application until the first in-person meeting of the board. So those questions that Mr. Kaiser has asked will be able to be reiterated in person. I think we have heard those concerns before, and certainly, the board is, should consider them. But again, I want to assure Mr. Kaiser that no decision will be made on the conditional use application until the board's first in-person meeting.
Okay. Mike, I guess, can you verify with Mr. Kaiser that he, he got this information from Mr. Sander? And if he has any further questions, to either send them in, or hopefully, when we have a live meeting, he can show up and express his feelings from the podium. Does anybody else have any questions on this matter for, for Dave to answer? Okay, seeing none. I guess that was our only public comment for the time being. Reports from committees, boards, and commissions, do we have anything from last night's planning commission? John, do you want to give anything about the planning commission, or Jerry, or everybody?
Well, the only thing I could say that I recall, I mean, obviously, they've been looking at this curative amendment for several meetings, and we're quite ahead of the other townships' planning commissions, who we were told have not yet looked at this. And the one thing that stands out to me was their consensus about the number of fuel pumps, and there's some nomenclature that's a little confusing, but their consensus was that any convenience store/gas station combination, there should be a limit to the number of fueling stations. I guess, eight hoses total, you know, to be consistent with virtually all the other gas stations in Newtown Township, which the maximum have been eight, so. And they noted that, you know, well, if they want more, there's always the ask-for variances, which every other gas station, I'm assuming, can also ask for. So that's about all that I can report from there.
Thanks, John. Jerry, did you have anything to add, or?
Well, there are a couple of things. You know, first, that I can recall was that Upper Megfield Township and Wrightstown Township had recommended that the square footage of the retail establishment be reduced from 6,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet, and that has to go around to get comments. And also, the minimum lot size of 1,000, of 1 acre is sort of not fungible as it is because of the setback requirements. So that's being looked at by Lisa Wolf of the Bucks County Planning Commission to see what, if any, setbacks would work on a parcel of only one acre. We don't have that information back yet.
Okay. Thank you. But it's, I'm assuming, well, from what I heard, hopefully, it's moving on to the other planning committee. Like John said, we're way ahead of the schedule. We're just waiting for them to.
Yeah, that's correct. The other two townships, the planning commissions have not met. I'm not sure about what they're doing, but virtual meetings like we just had last night. But we've had now four or five meetings to discuss this versus none for them. My sense is that the supervisors that attended joint chair meetings for those two townships intend on doing most of the work, and maybe just, you know, passing it along to the planning commissions for some kind of review, but I don't think they can have enough time to do as much review as we've done.
And I think the, the respected solicitors are pretty much on the ball with what's going on, and just unfortunately, has to get to the planning commissions, and, you know, this thing's throwing a whole wrench in the machinery here.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Moving on, board members' reports. I have nothing to report, except everybody to stay safe, stay home, and stay strong. We'll all get through this, and unfortunately, it may be the new norm, but, you know, we have to respect each other's distance for the time being. So, you know, and unfortunately, being of Italian descent, I guess I can't hug anybody or kiss their cheeks, or whatever, or whatever, but, but that goes without saying, so. I'll move to Mr. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. I, I wanted to kind of emphasize the same thing Phil just said. I just, I've seen communities being very, very nice and positive to each other, doing activities together, and I just wanted to continue to encourage folks to do that. I know in our community, we've had teddy bears in the windows. More important, we had a food drive yesterday, that we were loading someone's car up, and I think they were going to go to Bucks County Opportunities Council and deliver the food. So I'm also aware that a number of clubs around the town has been, have been donating meals to first responders and hospital folks. So I think all those are important things, and we are all in this together, and I wanted to just encourage folks to continue doing that and to take care of themselves, including their, their own stress levels and their own mental health, and, you know, doing something for someone else is a, is a good way to, is a good way to take the focus off ourselves and, you know, take things a little more lightly.
Thanks, guys. John?
Well, first of all, I'm all prepared to go out with my mask. This is my preferred outfit. But also, I want to thank residents for helping each other, and I don't know if you can see this, but I got a bunch of yeast from a neighbor because I was complaining that I couldn't find yeast in the supermarket to bake bread, which I'm trying to become more proficient in, and I guess so is everybody else, because you also can't find flour in the supermarket. But I did have, I did talk to a few people on the board and other people about maybe things that Newtown might be able to do to help support local businesses, aside from, I know they need financial support, and that's maybe not something that a township like ours can really provide too much help for that, but there are a number of things that I. Number one, I think there are several lists out there of current businesses that are open. I know that the Newtown Business Association has, maintains a list of its members. It's the, the internet, and it specifies how we can support local businesses, specifically their member businesses, and the list could be found on their website. Can I name their website? I guess, is okay.
Sure. I think Mr. Lewis will be able to put that on our teleprompter, so people know to go.
It's Newtown MBA.org, basically. Also, the patch has, has been maintaining a useful list of businesses, not only in Newtown, but in other areas close around us, and that list includes not only businesses that are currently open and how they are serving the public, like restaurants where you can pick up or have a free delivery, but whether the business is closed, and also suggestions for how residents can help businesses. I know several businesses and restaurants are offering, you know, free meals if you buy a gift cart. So there have been several restaurants beginning to open up, even in the village of Newtown, a shopping center. One interesting things that I got from my personal contact with several businesses has an idea that maybe the township could think about. They were asking for some sign forgiveness, such as, I don't know, relaxing some of the signage rules, at least temporarily, to help businesses promote to residents. I don't know, you know, how important that will be, or how easy it might be to do something like that, I don't know. This pay expense, even though they are not getting much income, and rent forgiveness was one of them, and a few, several businesses have told me that they've maybe applied for the Small Business Association loans, but have not yet received money, so. And I'm not quite sure how the owners of the properties that they're paying rent to are helping them, and maybe we could, as at Newtown, talk to some of the owners of some of the shopping centers to see exactly, you know, how they are handling this situation with their tenants, and that's another thing maybe the township can promote. And if we are going to promote these lists, or whatever ideas we might come up with on the website, I think maybe we can also probably do something on the cable TV channels that we, we have, so. That's something I would like to see, and I guess I can talk to maybe Mike or later about some of the specific things I mentioned.
Okay, thank you, John. Kyle, anything?
Yeah, I want to say to Micah and the administration, thanks for all your hard work during this crisis. It's got to be difficult having to do your jobs with less staff and less time, and also thanks to Chief Hearn and Forsythe for all the hard work of their teams during the pandemic. So just wanted to extend that thank you to them, and let them know they're appreciated. We know they're working hard. So thanks, everybody.
Here, here, thanks, Kyle. David?
A lot of great stuff has been said by all the board members here. I echo all comments. You know, I want to encourage as many people as we can to continue to listen to the guidelines that are coming down from our extended public officials, you know, but, you know, warm weather's coming, and, you know, it's good to get outside if we can, continue to practice social distancing, of course, but, you know, go for walks, you know, go for a couple runs if you can, things like that, just so that we can all break up the monotony the best way we can. As far as what John said, in regards to those small businesses in our township, encourage folks that are looking for particular items or services, feel free to, you know, look those companies up on your social media, either Facebook or Instagram, I'm sure they have pages where we can access them and see what services they provide, or products that might be available. And as far as our, our men and women of the police force, thank you. Our EMTs, thank you. And also, our emergency services, you know, thank you very much for all you do.
Okay, thank you. I guess, moving right along here, we have land development, Penn Trail Investments, preliminary as final plan. And do we have Mr. Murphy?
Here. We're bringing him in right now.
Okay, there he is. Ed, you're on, take him out, you're on mute.
Unmute yourself, Ed, there you go.
Okay. All yours.
Thanks for hearing us this afternoon. What's in front of us, and for the board to consider, is the land development plan, the preliminary as final land development plan for the Three Penns Trail property that used to be the headquarters of Third Federal Bank. That existing building's been converted to a Capitol Health facility, both floors, and what's proposed today is the construction of a new one-story likely medical office building in front of that building.
Let me just, oh, okay, I was going to, Micah, can you, okay, there you go, I'm sorry.
There, yep. So you can see the existing Capitol Health building to the rear and the new one-story building in the front, along Newtown Yardley at the corner of Penns Trail. So the plan's been reviewed and approved in the normal course by all of your consultants, and most recently, by your planning commission last month before the shutdown. Dave has circulated a draft of potential conditions to be attached to the, any approval that this board may grant, and we're in agreement with the suggested conditions. So unless there are questions, I think we're probably at a point where, if the board was of a mind, they could make such a recommendation to move on.
Dave, you want to shape a motion here, or a little bit more explanation as to what we have to do tonight?
Well, it's before the board for preliminary and final plan consideration, and if the board was of a mind, obviously, after additional comment and opening it up to public comment, it would be a motion to grant preliminary and final plan approval for the Three Penns Trail construction project of a one-story office building, probably, as Ed said, to be medical offices, but to be determined. Conditioned on the following. First, the applicant's compliance with CKS's review letter dated February 14, 2020. Second, compliance with Remington Vernix's review letter dated January 31, 2020. Third, compliance with Remington Vernix's February 4, 2020, traffic review letter with the understanding that the applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee in lieu of any further investigation or implementation of traffic mitigation improvements. Fourth, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission's August 7, 2019 memo. Fifth, compliance with the Newtown Township Emergency Services Letter dated February 3, 2020. Sixth, compliance with Gannett Fleming's February 10, 2020, letter for the Newtown/Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority Regarding Wastewater Management. Seventh, compliance with all conditions of the zoning hearing board's November 1, 2018 decision. Eighth, plannings and hedges must be acceptable to the township planner, and the proposed plants must be on the approved plant list and must effectively screen from adjoining residentially zoned districts and along Newtown Yardley Road. Ninth, the applicant shall pay all outstanding fees and costs owed to the township prior to the signing of plans and they're being recorded. And tenth, the applicant shall pay the applicable township impact, traffic impact fee at the time of first building permit application as calculated by the traffic engineer, once the use of the property and the building is determined. In addition, the board grants the following three waivers from the subdivision and land development ordinance. First, a waiver from Section 22-514.9 to allow parking within 20 feet of the outside building wall. Section 22-529.4 to allow the applicant to provide 19 parking lot shade trees, where 36 such trees are required. And third, a waiver from Section 22-514.2 to allow parking in the front side and rear yards due to the proposed building's dual frontage, where all off-street parking in commercial and industrial zones is required to be located to the side and rear of buildings. And that is the full motion.
In regards to the parking, which you say are on all sides, we have a similar situation down the road, where we have the buildings, I guess, I don't know what the development is, but I think there was always an issue of having the cars parked, basically, they're facing the roadway as opposed to a side, side issue or a back issue. Why is, why is this any different? Ed, or Dave, or?
Yeah, Ed, I'll let you.
Well, if you want to, if Micah wants to put the plan back up, I think you can see the condition that we're talking about. Micah, do you have the ability to do that? So Phil, what you can see there is, the intention is for the site to be utilized in a coordinated fashion between both buildings, so we are parking the entire site, including all around the building in the front of the building adjacent to Newtown Yardley Road. So because it has multiple frontages on a corner lot, it would be almost impossible to provide the required parking if you couldn't use the parking adjacent to Newtown Yardley. So it's intended to be a coordinated development, and that's why it was designed the way it was.
Okay, because, I mean, just even noticing the, Micah, that shot again there. I mean, if you notice, the buildings to the, to the left and the right, there's no parking, basically, up onto the roadway. This would be the only one, even if you go down further to, I want to say, across from the old swim club there, even those are not onto the roadway.
You have other improvements on the building right across from Penns Trail, that there's a outdoor exercise or play area between the building and the road over there, and the old Pico Building to the east of that has parking similarly situated, but, you know, we had, unlike the other site next to it, we have, you know, lots of additional landscaping and trees, and we are providing the significant right-of-way adjacent to Newtown Yardley Road, as you can see.
Right. Okay. Well, Mike, yeah, I mean, I have no problem, but I guess the question would be if this, if this use were to go away, are we going to maintain the parking the way it is along that roadway for whoever to maybe take over that, that building?
Correct. Yeah, that would be, all the improvements are private and to be privately maintained, not township maintained.
Okay. All right, well, I guess, and all the conditions are okay with you, right?
Yes, as Dave has recited, then, all those conditions are acceptable to the applicant. Yes.
Any other, any, oh, well, I guess I'll take a motion on Mr. Sanders's proposal there. Anyone?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion second. Now, does any board members have any questions in regards to this?
Well, I did have a similar question to yours, Phil, about the parking, but also, you talked about a waiver for the traffic impact study, and yet, we are going to collect fees in lieu of doing a study, is that what that's about?
No. We did the study, John, as required by your ordinance, and we are also paying the fee generated by your ordinance, so we're not asking for any waiver from either of those requirements. What was commented upon in the, in the draft approval resolution that Dave recited was the fact that in the Township Traffic Engineer Review Letter, it said, perhaps more, perhaps further study might be required to identify other mitigation efforts. But what we've said is that since we're paying the fee, which depending on the use, it's going to be in. the use, it's going to be in the 70-plus or minus thousand range, that payment of the fee would be in lieu of doing another study, which no one challenged in the first place. So we have done the study, and we're paying the fee. So that's what that's about.
I guess unfortunately, I haven't seen that study, but I assume that it's not a significant impact on the traffic is the result of the study?
That's right, because of the volume of traffic on Newtown Yardley Road, and what we're adding to it is candidly a fraction of the amount of traffic that exists, the through traffic that exists today.
Okay, the only other thing I had was the letter from the Parks and Rec Department about waiving, waiving a fee in recognition of preserving open space or something to that effect. And can you say a little bit more about that? I mean, how does that work? I mean, what open space are we actually talking about?
No, I think the way in non-residential applications such as this, what your Park and Rec Committee reviews is whether or not to require open space or pay a fee in lieu of providing it. So the recommendation of your Park and Recreation Committee, as you might suspect, given the location of it, is to pay the fee in lieu of providing on-site active recreation, which is what we're doing.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a question or two.
Yes, sure, Ed.
The, the 227 parking spaces, was that site-wide for the two buildings?
It was, yes, thank you.
And you have a, and you're keeping the same entrance and exits?
We are.
There's no cuts in the parking area anywhere else, so that would, you know, keep the traffic going the same way it's going now?
That's correct.
I think, I think that's all. Are there pushes that, along the parking on Newtown Yardley Road, what height would they be like? They would, like, stop the lights from shining across the street, I guess?
Correct. And I think your ordinance spells out the height of those plantings where required in order to shield all lights emanating from the site. That's right.
Yep.
One other thing, one other thing that I'd like to note is that there's a sidewalk included that connects along the Newtown Yardley Road with the other, another sidewalk and across, the crosswalk over there to the Newtown Trail. And then it goes around Penns Trail down to the end of the property there, so.
That's correct, John. That's right.
That would allow residents from the developments across Newtown Yardley Road to at least walk pretty far through that neighborhood, which I've met with several residents wishing that they could. That's appreciated.
And that was, John, to that point, that was a recommendation made by the Newtown Business Association, Park Association as well, to try to continue to develop the network of sidewalks so that employees of the park can, at noon time, walk in a, in larger areas than they can now. So you're right, we've added a significant missing link to that sidewalk network.
Thank you.
Okay. Dave, just one question. Because this is a preliminary as final, is it required for any kind of public comment at, at this period of time? I know we are at a late venture here, but?
Yes, I would recommend that the board, before taking a vote, calling for the vote, open it up to public comment, wait maybe a full minute or so, to see if any, a minute or two to see if any public comment comes in over the email, and entertain it if it does.
Okay, can you tell people how to submit a comment by email again, the specifics?
Micah?
Micah?
It's at comments@newtownpa.gov. It's actually shown on the TV screen right now.
Oh, okay.
All right, why don't we give it a, a five-minute period of time? Should, should we move on to anything else? I mean, we have a motion in a second, I guess we'll, wait a five-minute recess, so to speak, see if anybody submits any kind of questions. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Eddie, is that okay with you?
I think that's wise.
Okay. All right. Talks amongst yourselves.
Anybody have a recipe for sourdough bread?
Yeah, but you need yeast for it. Oh, sorry.
Got you. Send your recipes to comments@newtownpa.gov.
While we are waiting, I'll just say, I spent the morning looking at the township website just to see all the, all the resources that were there around COVID-19. And there's, I mean, like I say, I spent the morning and I saw to get to all the, all the links and to see what information was, valuable information was on there, including a lot of small business information. So thank you, Micah, and staff.
Yes, we have been populating that, and we'll continue to populate that with information that we've received from either the county or any, any government entity that is looking to, to give a hand or, or putting information out there about the pandemic.
Anything, Micah? Any public comments?
Anything coming across?
Nothing coming across. Give it another minute or so.
Okay, doesn't look like anybody submitting anything. Okay. Got you. All right, got a motion in a second on, if any further questions from the board, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sounds unanimous.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Micah. Thanks for putting the plans up.
Okay. Moving on to reports of officials, engineers report. Leanna?
Thank you. First item we have is the ratification of the bid rejection for the 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Just a little bit of background, we opened bids on March 4th. We received three bids for the project. And basically, as a result of the funding and loan that was needed to support the project, you know, we discussed with township staff, and basically the recommendation letter was made to reject the bids and rebid with, with a revised scope of work that would utilize all liquid fuels funds. So we are in the process of that right now, so first, the bid for ratification.
Okay, pass that motion.
Can somebody explain what the ratification process means? I'm not, we've never done anything like this before.
That, that's correct. That basically means that there has been an action that has been authorized by at least three members of the, a majority of the Board of Supervisors that needed to be taken due to timing requirements, that was taken administratively. However, the Sunshine Act and the Second Class Township Code require that all actions be taken, or in this case ratified, after the fact at a public meeting. So ratification is the board voting to approve after the fact what it administratively approved previously.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the.
Okay, got a motion in a second?
Thank you.
The other question. Dave, this ratification, is it to reject the one that we approved?
Micah, did we approve? We didn't approve a bid, did we?
Did we approve a bid before?
No, we, we received bids.
You're muted, Micah. You're muted.
Sorry. We received bids, and we went through the, the formal bidding process. We received the bids, so what we're doing now is rejecting the bids, or ratifying the rejection of the bids because of that million-dollar road loan that we're, we're turning down at this point.
Okay, because of this, what, what the situation that we're in with the, again, the pandemic?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. Which means that no bids have been accepted. So part of this is not to reject a bid that previously accepted, it's just to reject all bids.
I got you. Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any other further questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes 5-0. Next?
So the next item is, goes along with the 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program. This is to ratify authorization for us to prepare a new bid package with the revised scope of work to use liquid fuels funds. We were provided the scope of work by township staff, so we would need to ratify that authorization.
Okay, and this is because we rejected the original bids that came in, we have to go out and rebid according to the time period allotted from this point on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Moved up.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions from the board?
I have a, a question about the liquid fuels, the funds. Do we have an idea what the, that amounts to? How much money are we talking about?
We have roughly $685,000 in liquid fuels in, in, in the accounts right now. So we're.
So that, that would be enough for a certain amount of road repair, correct? Is that what we're?
What we're targeting is about, about $600,000 in improvements, and what that will roughly get is roughly two and a half to three miles or better.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I would, I would like to invite any of the supervisors to come over and, and drive down Colonial Drive and Sentinel Avenue and Penswood. Anytime, just, just saying, they're, they're in really need of repair.
Excellent. Thank you, Dennis. Any other further questions on this motion? Okay, seeing, did we make a motion? Again, if we made a motion on the second part, did we?
Yes, yes, a motion was made.
I, I got so many things. Do I get a phone? I got an iPad? I got the computer? I don't know. All right, we have a motion, a second. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes 5-0, I'm sorry.
Phil, let me ask you this. Micah, there hasn't been any public comment that's come in on either of the last two motions, either prior to or following the motions?
No.
Okay, obviously, alert us if, if there is.
And the final, Leanna?
All right, yep. The last item we have is certificate of completion number six for Meglio's Two Project. This was prepared by CKS engineers, so they recommend approval of certificate of completion number six contingent upon the township receiving the items that are outlined in the review letter.
Has the punch list been completed, or?
Uh, yes, it has.
Okay. A motion on the Meglio's Number Two Project Certificate of Completion Number Six, final. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, I have a second?
Second, again.
A motion in a second. Any questions from the board? Any questions coming in from the public? Seeing Micah's, there's no questions. I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Leanna.
Thank you.
On to Solicitors' Report. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is the ratification of the disaster emergency declaration of March 13th. Recall that the township, like most municipalities, like the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, like the federal government, declared an emergency based on the COVID-19 pandemic that was undertaken on March 13th. That went into effect and remains in effect. But as we ratified several actions that were taken previously by the board, we need to ratify this action as well. So it would require a motion to ratify the declaration of emergency disaster of March 13th, 2020.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Anything coming in from the public on the ticker machine? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you. The second item is the ratification of a resolution allocating one mil of real estate tax that was previously earmarked for the debt service fund to the general fund. Annually, one mil of real estate taxes earmarked for a borrowing. This year, it was, would have been for the borrowing that was scheduled to be undertaken for the road program. Obviously, an action that the board has already taken this afternoon, that borrowing and that original $1 million loan will not be undertaken, and therefore, it is no longer earmarked for debt service. There will be no debt this year. Therefore, pursuant to the Second Class Township Code, the board is authorized to make an inter-fund transfer of this one mil of real estate tax to the general fund. I'm sure Micah can go into the underlying reason why the general fund is in need of an injection of funds during the crisis. But if it was appropriate, the board should entertain a motion to authorize the ratification of the resolution transferring one mil of real estate tax from the debt service fund to the general fund.
Do I have such a motion? Any more? You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, can you, maybe, Micah, as Dave indicated, you might explain why we're doing this? You were very good at explaining this. If you could just, two minutes, say something.
Yeah, well, the, as you recall, the township's funds supporting the operation of the, the township, meaning paying for police, paying for equipment, paying for operational expenses, is based solely on earned income tax. Earned income tax, we collect on 1%, of the salary split between the township and the school district. And when people are out of work, that, that source of revenue, which is a majority of, of how we support the operation here, is greatly impacted. We won't know the full impact of what this has on township funds at this, until probably mid to late summer. So this move to reallocate some money into the, into the general fund from real estate tax millage is sort of an attempt to, to pump a little bit of money from another source that we'll need to, to pay for staff and services.
Okay. How much money are we actually talking about? One mil represented?
One mil? I'm sorry, that, one mil is approximately $360,000, $370,000.
And, and by doing that this, this year, doesn't mean that we're, we're going to do the same thing next year, right? It's just for this year?
It's just for 2020. I can tell you that I will be recommending that the budget be, the operation be supported by real estate tax next year in, in the manager's budget report in October. To what extent, it's unclear at this time. But we have a perfect situation right now of why the, the budget, as it was passed last year and subsequent years prior to that, is, is such a, is such a volatile budget when it comes to revenues from, from the sources that we have now. is such a volatile budget when it comes to revenues from the sources that we have now.
Well, we've heard that many times. I guess now it has really come home to roost, and I guess nobody could have foreseen such an event, but, you know, my feeling is that there should be more in reserve for contingencies than we've been currently having over the past few years, and we've been warned about that repeatedly, so it's just too bad that, you know, we have to do this, but I understand the need for doing it. Thank you.
It's definitely unprecedented times, so. And I just remind the board also that we do have the consultants that we're working on for, that we had already started working with to improve our financial situation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further questions?
Aye.
I'll call a question, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Passes five zero.
That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of today is $1,371,560. Plan expiration reports before the board with no action required. I do want to just say publicly that any comments that are being submitted as part of public comment need to be relevant. Mr. Sander, if I'm speaking incorrectly, please correct me, but the comments need to be relevant to the business and the operation of the township.
Certainly, specifically anything that has come in on items after the original public comment session at the beginning of the meeting should have been on agenda items. There will be a public comment section for the minutes bills and those financial reports. We will open it up again to public comment in general on items that are not necessarily on the agenda, but in general, public comments should be related, obviously, to township business and the realm in which the township functions.
Thank you. I have two ratification items under my report. First is the ratification to approve the 2020 consortium road materials bid. This is for stone and sand and products that we purchased for the general maintenance of our roads here. So our public works director had put together a recommendation that we purchase this material from the Bucks County Consortium, so what we're doing at this time is ratifying that decision that was made previously.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Now, this is materials that we would use to, you know, maintain potholes and so on, is that what we're doing with this?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is worrying, can I ask, I didn't hear who moved that first?
Kyle?
Kyle, okay, thank you, and Mr. Fisher seconded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further questions from the board on this motion?
Well, I just wanted to clarify the materials, and we also, I think, purchased recently some equipment that was, we were told, would allow us to fill these potholes in a more permanent manner using such materials, is that correct?
Yeah, we just bought a surface cleaner slash milling head for the Bobcat machine. That'll help us, you know, more permanently fix potholes, let's put it that way. And yes, some of the materials that you're reapproving for the consortium, on the consortium list here are wearing courses for asphalt and binder courses, which will absolutely be used in the repair of roads.
Thank you.
But the filling of those potholes is basically a temporary thing until the roadway is actually repaved, so it's not a fix-all, so, just so people understand that.
Right.
Okay. Any other further questions from the board? Anything coming from the public on this issue?
No.
Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Next item I have under my report is a ratification of the municipal police COVID-19 task force agreement. Essentially, what this agreement is, is an agreement with all the towns in Bucks County that have police departments to sort of work together to respond to each town if, should their officers be impacted. This is part of the emergency declaration that was previously mentioned during the meeting and approved, so we're asking for the ratification of that agreement.
Motion approved.
You have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mack, minutes, bills, lists, and reports.
Okay, there are four items, I believe, on my list here. The first is I move that we approve the minutes of the March 11, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any, boy, that seems like such a long time ago, huh? Any questions from the board? I assume no questions from the public. I just have to ask that, but seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Okay, then we have to ratify two decisions we already made about the bills list. The first one is the bills list of March 25, 2020. So I move that we ratify the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated March 25, 2020, totaling $145,507.21.
Motion, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, a second, any question from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero.
I move that we ratify the interfund transfers as per the bills list dated March 25, 2020, totaling $220,250. I hope I'm getting these numbers right.
Motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, any questions from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
All right, moving on to the bills list of April 7, 2020, I move that we ratify the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated April 7, 2020, totaling $216,481.04.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second? Second, any questions from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Move that we ratify the interfund transfers as per the bills list dated April 7, 2020,
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second? Second, motion, a second, any questions from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Finally, related to the bills list dated April 22, 2020, I move that we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated April 22, 2020, totaling $220,316.50.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, don't shout it out all at once now. Motion, a second, any questions from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Finally, I move that we approve interfund transfers as per the bills list dated April 22, 2020, totaling $234,305.00 and no cents.
Okay, motion, I have a second? Second, motion, a second, any questions from the board? From the public, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, John. Public comment, do we have anything that has come in recently?
There is one, Mr. Chairman, and I'll read it.
Let me just say that this is public comment, this is not a debate for us to answer back, so let the person have their say, just as if they came up to the podium.
And I think, Micah, you should probably start with the name and if provided, address of the public commenter.
There is no address that they had sent in.
Okay.
This is from a gentleman named Steve, forgive me if I butcher this last name, Fanskill. When will the final decision be made on Toll Brothers, the Toll Brothers proposal for the development in the CM District at the intersection of Durham Road and Twining Bridge? And when will the public have another chance to submit comments and feedback regarding this? Obviously, as Mr. Sander had said, the applicant has granted an extension till the next time the board meets in person. What public comment will look like at that time will have to be decided, whether it'll just be through email, if we're doing today, or if the public will actually be allowed into the meeting itself, so. That's sort of the response, I don't know if anybody else had anything else.
I think that was pretty accurate, so.
Well, can we get a clarification on what is and what isn't an in-person public meeting? I mean, if you're not going to allow the public into the building, why should I come into the building? If it's not safe enough for the public, it's not safe enough for me, so you got to clarify that.
I don't foresee the township holding a quote "in-person" meeting without allowing the public in. I think that what is meant by in-person meeting means meeting of the board that takes place in the Newtown Township Building, in the meeting room, with supervisors and the public admitted so that the public can make appropriate comment.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I'd like to go on record saying I like that description.
I do too, I mean, as long as we keep the physical distance that we're supposed to have.
Well, we could have the seating arranged to the proper ma, I mean, even for the public, we could have it spaced out so no one is sitting right on top of one another.
Maybe we can have the chairs that far apart.
Okay. Well, yeah, well, there just won't be as many chairs, that's all. Okay, any other public comment? Okay. Old business, anyone have any old business? I see there's a new business item, I think, Mr. Lewis, you want to discuss that?
Yeah. The county has recently pushed back the 10% speed on the real estate bills for the county portion of the bill from July 1st to July 31st. So Mr. Sander has prepared a resolution that basically aligns the township portion of that bill with the county portion of that bill. So we're pushing back the penalty associated with the real estate tax bill from July 1st to July 31st.
Okay, so this is some, a little bit of relief for the residents of the township.
Correct.
Okay, and we need a motion on this, correct?
If the board wanted to adopt the resolution today, yes. If not, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Is everybody comfortable with that, that someone will make a motion?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Related to something we got from the joint chair, I think, you know, from Baccato, about Senate Bill 841, which extends some other taxing discount deadlines and penalties. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read it, but it was, the first paragraph says, and this is a Senate bill that the governor signed, permits taxing districts to extend the discount date till August 31st, and it permits taxing district resolution to waive penalties until December 31st. I don't know if that incorporates any of, if our resolution wants to go back to the drawing board and incorporate that, or if it's something completely different, I'm just misunderstanding.
That's a correct assessment, Dennis, of what is that was signed two years ago by the governor. It's at the board's, certainly at the board's discretion. It doesn't have to do that, it's authorized to do that if it wishes.
Okay, how about the wishes of the board? We'll poll the consensus here, because we don't have to approve this tonight.
Right, maybe we should table a decision on it, but have a little discussion about it.
Well, what's the problem with approving what's on the agenda today and then just circling back to the other item? What we have in our hands, that's my suggestion.
Good question.
Well, we need to know what the economic impact might be extending it further, but you're saying to approve what we have now and then modify it later?
Pass another resolution based on that, what we're just talking about.
One before the board right now is just to push back the penalty from, first to July 31st. Micah, that's correct?
Yes.
Doesn't deal with the discount period, and it only goes to July, July 1, July 31st. If taxes are not paid, the penalty rate kicks in. So that's what's before the board today. The board can adopt this resolution and then either revise it or adopt additional tax relief, or you could table this and come up with an all-inclusive resolution.
And I would say that there's several other municipalities in the county that have already done this.
I see no problem with what Kyle has suggested, because this is April, we still have May and June to take this under consideration, but, you know, as long as we pass this, we could come back and reconsider if we need. They, you know, if the economy is still going not full-fledged, then we can make a decision to extend.
Yeah.
How's that?
I agree with that.
That sounds good to me, Phil.
Yeah, I think also you have to factor in that we will also have other types of relief that will be coming down towards the municipalities later on from, you know, whatever other stimulus bills are passed, so it doesn't make sense to, you know, hold up one thing when there will be other things we have to consider as well, so I think we should move forward.
All right.
I withdraw my motion if I haven't made a motion, so.
Okay, do I have a motion on this?
I have, motion approved.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. I think that's it, do we have anything that you want to discuss in executive session off the recording?
Not that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Micah?
No.
Okay, then I just think it's a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to go home?
Yeah.
Good seeing everybody.
Hey, stay safe, everybody.
Everyone stay self-helpy, yeah, absolutely, you all.
You too, see you guys.
Bye. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.